Right. I'd like to call the meeting of the regular policy committee meeting on July twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four at three P M. to order. We have three members here, plus we have one member attending because of a medical condition on Zoom. So I am going to, because and because of that, we will have a forum then. Right?
Yes.
Okay, so let me let me make sure that the law says that you can be here.
Um. Was Gordon gonna join us by Zoom?
Of course, Gordon, he didn't get back. Oh, Gordon's there.
Oh, he's present.
Yes, let's see if he can join them.
So that, yeah, so this would be the same, same thing.
They can't talk. Yeah, they can.
Yeah, if it's an exception.
Are you there, Gordon? He's muted. Oh, there he is. Okay, there you are. Hello. I'm sorry, how are you feeling?
Well, it's a first stages of trying to recuperate.
Okay.
You're gonna do pretty good.
So Gordon, did you, did you have this yesterday?
I go, I tested last night.
Oh, my God.
So you might have some fun.
I guess I'd better test tonight.
So what I'd like to say is that we have two members of our committee, regular members of our committee, who are both, both have medical conditions that are preventing them from being here. Um, then that you cannot, you cannot attend because of your medical condition. Um. Do, do both of, would both of you like to attend via teleconference?
Yes, please.
No, I can, this may not be quite as clear.
Okay. Um, and would you request that the board take action or the committee take action to allow you to participate remotely?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is per government code section four, five, four, nine, five, three. And the, the committee will need to vote to allow you to participate by teleconference. Um, uh, first I need to ask you, is there anyone that is within earshot of your of your, either your computer or your iPad, uh, who is, who is greater, older than eighteen years of age?
No.
Are they present in the room?
No.
Okay.
Not present in the room.
Okay. Okay, so, and we want you to stay with audio and video, so don't mute yourself.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I'd like the committee to vote to allow them to participate.
No objection.
All those in favor? Okay, everybody says it's great for you to be here.
For them.
Okay. All right.
Well. That follows the original again.
Yeah, it's protocol. Okay, chair report. Okay, um. So what I'd like to, what I'd like to say as far as the chair report is concerned is we have been a lot of things today for discussion. And based on the discussion that we have today, what we'd like to do is we'd like to look at where do we go from? Um, so, um, we really aren't gonna be, um, the only thing we're gonna be doing is considering the the minutes and we'll do that momentarily. So I just hope that all of you are, can participate to the fullest. And I am so glad that the two people who have medical conditions are, are here to, to join us. So thank you for that. Right, um, agenda item one D is the ad hoc subcommittee report. So Ted, would you like to go ahead and present that agenda item as well, present that report?
Yeah, okay, so, um, the climate policy group met at my home on Saturday. And we had a very lively discussion. We had lots of materials provided by both uh, uh, Jim and Christine Heinrichs. And we looked over those, uh, and what we really came to is the, it's, it, it is, is the, is the uh, a draft, we came up with a draft. First of all, we looked at the idea of the naming of this policy. And we decided that, uh, we, we would like to present, uh, for consideration, uh, naming the policy the climate adaptation policy. Um, and really what I did was I just took the preamble from, uh, my previous policy and in- included that in there. But I did want, I did want to point out that one of the things that we, that we, that we talked about was that the policy itself is going to, to point towards a, um, uh, a climate, a climate action plan. And, um, as it turns out in our, in our researching, we did find that, um, people have been putting together climate a- action plans for over twenty years. So, uh, the reality is that, um, we are not leading edge at all in, in that process. But, uh, um, we felt it was important to point out that, you know, that, that, that if we're gonna produce a adaptation policy, there needs to be action by the, the district to produce a climate action plan. And, um, so I've highlighted on my draft here, you know, to be congruent with these requirements, the district manager, engineering and staff will respond with a climate action policy um, that addresses the following areas. And so what we attempted to do was to establish a roadmap. And again, we really reinvent the wheel here. We, we looked at what other people are, are doing. And, uh, uh, discovered that, you know, they very nicely laid out, uh, laid out a, a program, a plan, a process, if you will, for, uh, for doing just that. So, um, uh, we took a look at these various categories here. Water efficiency, building efficiency, renewable energy, transportation, uh, zero waste and carbon sequestration. And, uh, included the goals, you know, the goals that should be, um, uh, considered in each of those, in those, each of those categories. Now, again, I want to point out that, um, you know, and you don't really need to reinvent the wheel here, you know? Uh, this, this whole business of a climate action, uh, plan, uh, you could certainly look up, uh, any one of it. I would probably, if I was gonna go about it, um, if I was a district engineer, I, I would take a look at, uh, one of the, the towns that are somewhat similar to what, you know, to what we are. And, you know, use that as a, as a, a roadmap for creating such a plan. Um, so again, you know, and I, this is a matter of, of responding to it. Don's been saying for quite a while is that policy belongs on a higher level. It belongs, you know, at a, at a, you know, a, a, an umbrella level as opposed to getting into the, you know, the bits and pieces. Now you'll see in this handout here that I've, I've, you know, I've, I've, or that that, that I've left what I put on, you know, the original policy. But looking at that thing, I, this does identify some things and it also talks about, you know, some of the things that the district is doing and so on, so forth. Sure, all things that would be, um, you know, considerations for the, the climate action uh, uh, plan to, to be looking at. So we, we're trying to keep it simple, trying to keep it down about a page and a half. So that, uh, all of the, um, you know, the, the movement forward just, you know, is, has been pointed to but by, by the policy. Um, you know, to keep it, you know, from getting too onerous. So, um, anyway, that's, that's kind of where we're at. And we, you know, when we, um, hopefully when you agenda this for next week, or not next week, uh, next month, uh, we can, um, begin to flesh out, you know, uh, some of the things like the name, like, you know, taking a look at the individual sections and, you know, and, and determining whether the goals and, you know, that I've jotted down here uh, or that we decided we're, we're good are, are in fact, uh, okay, or need, need expansion or uh, clarification. So, um, that's really kind of where we were, where we were at. And we, we certainly want to move forward on this as fast as possible because of, and you know, the bottom line is that this thing started when? And, you know, twenty twenty one, I think is when I submitted the first
Yeah.
draft and, you know, we're, you know, here we are in twenty twenty four. And, you know, one of the things that I've been, uh, um, so adamant about with, you know, all these, all of these things dealing with climate are that we just don't have that much time to mess around. I mean, the I B C C report is pretty clear. You know, we're, we're, we're behind the eight ball, guys. So we really need to move forward with this, all of this, not just our policy, but your, your action plan, you know, as, as much as you can. The one thing we didn't put in here, and I'm, and I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm throwing this out there, is it should the policy, um, establish a, a timeline? Do, do we want to, do we want to say that we will be zero CO2 by X date? You know, how, how do we, what parameters of, of time do we want to put on this? Or do we want to put that on? Is that part of the action plan? But I do think that it's, that it's important. Um, and one of the things that, that, uh, that I did point out here too was that, uh, many of these groups have established baseline emissions inventories. If you're going to measure your objectives, you do need to probably have a starting point. You know, and I, and again, I wouldn't get into it, you know, too awfully deeply, but, um, you know, if you're going to measure your progress, you probably need a, a start, a starting point. You know, I, you know, uh, you know, here we are in twenty twenty four, our, our baseline emissions. And, you know, and, um, discharges are X. What will they be? You know, how soon, you know, can we make it? Do we make it twenty thirty? Make it twenty thirty-five? What, what, when, when, you know, do we reach, you know, zero CO2? I mean, that's because that's, I mean, or less. I mean, that's, that's what we want, we want, we want a little bit less would be great. Because the truth is unless, unless as, as, um, unless humanity does some carbon, not some carbon sequestration, a lot of carbon sequestration, uh, we're never gonna get to where we need to be. Now, obviously, you know, uh, uh, you know, I, I've talked about that a little bit here. Um, there are things that, that go on in lieu of, you know, big machines that take carbon out of the air. Well, machines that take carbon out of the air are known as trees. And, you know, as a matter of fact.
And clean oceans.
And clean oceans, oh yes. And, and yeah, the oceans are getting almost, almost done absorbing CO2. It's, it's scary. So, so anyway, I don't want to get any further into that. I mean, um, you know, I, let's, I just assume, open it up. Uh, you know, if anybody would like to discuss this further, or if you want to put it on the agenda for next, next time, since we have obviously an active agenda that you mentioned.
Well, I'd like, um, I'd like Jim, Jim, do you have anything to add to the report that Ted's given?
Um, I had a, um, a, a question and a comment. Uh, the question would be, one of the handouts we were given, uh, that says, uh, to C C S D board from ad hoc climate change committee, there's no date on it. Uh, and the summary, the first line says, in response to the climate change policy document dated December twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, I poked around on the C C S D website for a good forty-five minutes and was not able to find that climate change document dated December twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. And it would be very helpful, I think, to the ad hoc subcommittee uh, to get our hands on that document, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Um, oh, yeah, well, I, you know, that.
That would be my question. Uh, the comment would be, I did hear back yesterday from Senator John Laird's office. And they confirmed that as far as they knew, there were no um, legislative requirements regarding climate change policies uh, for community service districts at a statewide level. There's a number of other policies regarding, you know, vehicle use and that sort of thing that mostly come from CARB, the California Resources Board. But, um, uh, the, the, the person at Laird's office was not aware of any formal legislation requiring community service districts to put together a, um, uh, a, a, a climate change policy. That being said, most of the communities I looked at did have something and they were all called climate adaptation plans. So there's clearly, uh, some, some desire among many municipalities to do that. Again, I agree with Ted, yeah, in that a, a one or two-page policy. Um, and then, and then we would hope to get some support from the board for following that up with a more detailed, uh, climate adaptation plan. That's it, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Um, what I, I do want to let you know that, um, from the discussion that happened at the board, um, they were, um, at this point, they said, we need a policy. At least the majority of the board said, we, we need a policy first. Um, and then at the point that the policy is approved by the board, then there would be an ad hoc of the board that would put together the climate action plan.
Mm-hmm.
Because it would be more in, in, um, unison with, um, the staff.
And the R N A.
And the R N A, yes. So does that make sense to you, to Jim?
Um. It, it does make sense from a, um, from a, I guess, a technical standpoint, from a practical standpoint of actually getting something done. Uh, given how busy the board members are with other projects, I'm not so sure that that's the most efficient use of their time. But that's the board's decision, not mine.
Yeah, and that's, you know, we can, we can make that recommendation when, once the policy is approved, you know, we can have that discussion at that point. So I think that's a, that's a, that's a good way to kind of take a look at it.
Yeah.
Um, any of, yes.
I just, uh, um, and you're gonna call it a climate action plan?
No.
Or a climate, um.
Climate adaptation.
Adaptation plan.
So.
No, policy.
Climate, the climate, our, our proposal
Yes.
for the name is the climate adaptation policy, which will point at the climate action plan.
It'll, it'll be the basis.
You know what? I said climate action policy. I'm in climate action. Sorry.
Plant, so climate ad- adaptation plan or climate, um.
Yeah, I screwed that up.
Climate.
Yes.
Adaptation policy.
If, if you look at the.
Another policy, the climate adaptation, is it adaptation or is it, what's the other word you were using?
This is, this is the one here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That, that's the. To say.
You called it.
I meant to say plan, not policy. I'm sorry, I, 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 I missed that. Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Or adaptation.
Yeah, I should have been, C A P means climate action plan, not policy.
Yeah, normal, I gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was rushing to get this thing done.
No, I really appreciate the work that you all have done. And I know Christine, um, was, um, part of the hard work that you all did. So I really, really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. She's, she's a, um, a really great uh, person to have as a, as a, um, public, um.
Member?
Member, right.
Yes.
Uh, just a couple of time, so we already talked about that. It says C A P is a action plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I screwed that up.
I like your idea of including some kind of timeframe. I think that goals that are just out there and without something, uh, it'd be reasonable.
Yeah.
Uh, I think to include, uh, right timings and perhaps either an overriding one or dealing with each thing individually, that would depend on, uh, the other thing, um.
Just let me speak to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think that would be part of the plan instead of part of the policy. But I think it's definitely needs to be.
Yeah, I mean, I, and again.
Policy should be, the plan should have
Yeah.
goals that, you know, time, timeframe.
Yeah.
And, and honestly, I, it, it's my belief that the board would oversee the construction plan, whereas, you know, that my suspicion is that that really belongs in the purview of the district manager, engineering and staff itself to, to actually construct the plan itself. And I would think that the, the, that the drop dead dates would be established by them.
Yes.
And then approved or not approved by the board.
The plan, the plan itself will be then approved or not approved by the board. Absolutely.
Yeah, or, or, or in piecemeal, you know, whatever.
Yes.
But, uh, not, not, not to add one more thing to your plate, uh, sorry about that, but, uh, but as I say, I, 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 I think that if you do take a look at what other districts and cities and all that have done, I mean, I, you know, I have them here and, and, you know, an email. I know some of them are like a hundred pages, um, but, but if you don't really have to reinvent the wheel here. And some of the things that you'll read and some of those are just not applicable. Some of them are, some of them aren't. I mean, you know, you'll, you'll see very quickly what makes sense and what doesn't. I would think that, that, you know, that your engineer could go through that, well, along with you, pretty quickly.
Hmm.
I, we should be looking at a grant to hire a consultant to help us develop that, like more vague data or something like that.
I mean, you could do that.
To be, to be honest, Jim has about two dozen projects on his plate, so he's a project manager, utilities manager.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
Again, that's totally up to you as district manager.
Did, um, last year, we applied for a climate adaptation resilience grant.
Right.
We didn't go through and then this year we applied again.
Yes.
And they cut the funding.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking at other grants to maybe help us in that area. I mean, it'll, it'll take a little bit of time, but I feel like we need like a special, like a specialist.
Yeah.
That, that specializes in something like that to help us mold it.
Well, and, and really at this, at this point, all we're doing is looking at a policy.
Sure.
That I think
Yeah, that's just our part.
You all have done a really good job to get us started.
Yeah.
So, um, from, from this point on, I, I don't think we need to go through.
No, no, well, we, 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 that's, that's for another meeting for sure.
Yeah, so, well, what I'd like to do is, um, is take your document and put it into a policy format.
Sure.
And then bring it back to the next meeting. And then we can wordsmith and.
Do you want to do that?
Yes.
Would you prefer to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, may I?
Yes.
Uh, this, I presume that the, basically what we're talking about is the, the first, the top page here is
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Policies.
Yeah.
Uh, what we have here are examples of implementation.
Yeah, yeah, right. And, and that was just part of the first thing that I wrote and I didn't take it out of this document. I just left it in there for, you know.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I.
Clarity on that.
Yeah, yeah, if you, yeah, if you, if you look here, you know, I, at the top of the, at the first page, some additional points from the previous policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, these are all.
Just as.
Yeah.
But, but, again, I think so many of these possible things to include in the policy, uh, two things, um. In terms of the waste, uh, remember that one of the C C S D's responsibilities is waste collection disposal. It happens that Mission Country does it for us, but they pay us for the privilege of doing that. Um.
Do they pick us, do they pick up the solid waste out of the waste treatment plant?
No, no.
No, no.
In terms of. Trying to point out Ted is that not only do we have our regular wastewater processing, but we actually are responsible for all of the town's waste.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
Absolutely.
It is possible, uh, somebody brought up, I don't remember where I was hearing it, wondering if it's possible to, for the district to negotiate with the I W M A, the Integrated Waste Management Authority, in terms of their rules. Uh, I'll give you an example, and, and I don't know, but it, the question would be, is it appropriate in the policy to suggest that the district might want to interact with I W M A? Uh, this sound, the example, in, in fact, what caused the whole brouhaha originally
Yeah.
was the I W M A decided that it would eliminate, that it will no longer permit people to include, uh, styrofoam in the waste stream. And, uh, our, the conservative, uh, branch of the Board of Supervisors said, no way. And furthermore, we're taking our place and going somewhere else.
Hmm.
Uh, so, uh, the argument was, in fact, the, the district was even asked to weigh in on the, on the subject. And the district said, yes, we approve of four, it was a four to one vote of the district approving the idea of eliminating styrofoam from the waste stream. So there was, uh, but that didn't happen because the I W A got dissolved because, uh, when the county pulled out. Uh, I'm just pointing that as an example. I don't know if that is something that's pursuable.
Well, it, it was reconstituted.
It's reconstituted now and it's probably going to be reconstituted again because the county is ready to join again.
Right.
So, I don't know. It's just whether, whether we have any say or whether the district should have, uh, should attempt to influence. I guess that's my question, which is the question about policy. Should the district, in addition to collecting the franchise fee, also interact? Because we do have, uh, the various, uh, members of I W M A do have, uh, representatives that govern. And it might will, it, it is an option for the district to, to take positions in that regard, but that's a decision.
Yeah, and see what, what I think is that that would be part of the plan.
Right.
That would be part of the plan. But I think we need to have a statement about what that to give guidance to that.
Well, a goal.
With I W M A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or work with
or other.
Other.
I liked, I, I, I'll be honest with you. I liked the idea of, you know, under each subheading, that you had a goal.
Right.
And, 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 and that is just, that's the goalpost.
Right.
Yeah. And, and, you know, who's gonna kick the ball and who's gonna hike the ball and all that.
Right.
You know, becomes a matter for the district's action plan
Yeah.
to, to, to decide. I think it's, the, the, the other thing that I ran into uh, with this that I thought was very interesting, you know, the business of, uh, you know, of, of, of renewable energy, um. You know, I can definitely say that, uh, the whole business of passive now really does rest on battery storage. I mean, it really does. And, uh, so when we get into the whole renewable energy thing, I think that it'd be very important for the district to, to determine, you know, what kind of batteries, you know, for example, here, if you want to make this place, this, this building here a, a harbor for people, you know, escaping whatever.
Yeah.
Um, you're gonna need to have battery power and you're gonna need to have battery power enough for days.
Yeah.
And that's where lithium fails, by the way.
Yeah.
Lithium fails when, when, when you're talking about battery storage for days. That, you know, um, so I don't want to get into that now that, I mean, I
No, I think.
I'm happy to give people tech talks. My God, I'm such a geek.
Go ahead.
One other possible policy statement that, that, that we kind of talked about a little bit that you all might want to include is the, the whole issue of decision making. That is to say, uh, that you, life cycle costs should be included.
Absolutely.
Not just budgetary, you know, that the lifecycle costs needed to be included.
Yeah.
Uh, in any purchasing decision.
In any purchasing decision, I, I've, I've flushed it out in transportation itself.
Yeah.
I say implementation of electric equipment as soon as it, uh, forgot, uh, E V, I'm sorry, E V transition with evaluation should be based on a cost per mile basis. That's where you really get, that's where you really understand, you know, whether the money that you're laying out for these pieces of equipment, you know, pays you back. I mean, and the point is, this should all pay, pay the district back. I mean, my God, if we're paying fifty thousand dollars a month for electricity, you know, i- 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 if you reduce that to a fraction of that, my God, you say the half a million dollars a year.
You can turn off a few lights.
Well.
I, I think that these. I, I think that these areas here, one of them needs to be decision making.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
It should be there.
Yeah.
I think one of the good things we, we could do is agendize this, cause this is turning into more like a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, see, I, I totally agree. I totally, I totally agree. I totally agree, I totally agree.
That's why I think at this point, um, I'm gonna put this in, in, um, policy form, format.
Please.
Be on the next agenda.
Absolutely, that makes perfect sense. Yeah, uh, yeah. And if you see any obvious glaring areas like calling a policy when it should be.
Well, no, no, I, I, I got, I got a good, I got, I know what to do, okay?
Are you gonna give it a number?
What a note.
Policy, the, the policy number, I have no idea.
Way down.
Yeah.
Not a temporary number.
No.
Because there's no place to put it in our list of things, so it'd be nice to kind of have an idea of where it's gonna fit in. The number, number just needs to kind of know where it's gonna go, so.
Well, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you to the ad hoc and to, um, Christine for helping you. Um, and also, um, we had in, input from another of, of the community members, Laura's.
Oh, Laura, Laura also, uh, uh, gave, uh, gave us some information.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention.
So that.
Sure, I, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I look at, uh, um, you know, I look at Laura and, um, uh, Crosby as being very important resources.
Yeah.
When it comes to forest and forest management.
Yeah, and that's why the part of the policy that you've had about.
Carbon sequestration.
Yes, I love it, okay, what was that word? Yeah, that's really good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, and, uh, we'll be, it'll be on the next agenda. Um, so now we are at public comment and public comment is, um, anything that is, um, on any item of interest within the jurisdiction of the committee, not within jurisdiction of the CCSD, but of the committee. Um, that is not on the agenda today, this is a time for public comment. Um, although I probably should have gone back to committee member communications. Yeah, was there anything that anybody wanted to talk about as far as committee member communications before we go on?
Well, uh, I just would like to, to note, um, and, you know, I, uh, and this is not necessarily, uh, policy oriented, but, um, on the sixteenth of, uh, um, July, uh, the, uh, presentation here at the Veterans Hall on, uh, the offshore wind, uh, uh, project, uh, drew a hundred people from this town after only two weeks of two, actually two and a half weeks of getting the information out there. My, my ND posting had over fifteen hundred hits.
Wow.
Uh, and, uh, actually two of them had over fifteen hundred hits. And a hundred people from our, from our town showed up, uh, and left the room going, holy crap. And, um, so, uh, I'm, I'm very excited about that. I, 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 I will tell you that, uh, my activities associated with, uh, offshore, when we will, we are planning to do a protest march here in town, uh, and I'm not, uh, sure yet exactly when that date will, will occur. We need to figure out, you know, what our route would be. Um, I would like to know if there is, you know, obviously it's nothing more than, you know, a piece of rally. Um, is there anything that, uh, that we need to do? Uh, scheduling or what have you with this, this CSD, or can we just simply schedule it and have, you know, have our, uh, march through town or whatever?
In other words, do you need a permit?
Do we need a permit? I, 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 I don't think we do.
It wouldn't really be us and that's on district property, so.
Yeah.
I would, maybe the county, uh, when you say march, are you just going up and down the sidewalk?
Yeah, we, we.
Shutting down streets, you know, that would be like county thing, right?
But, nothing like that.
Yeah.
Basically, it'll be, uh, nothing more than, oh, it's probably gonna be a fairly large group, but all we're going to do is to, is to, you know, walk through town with posters and that sort of thing.
By the way, um, if, and, uh, call the county, there probably is a, a permit for that to have.
Yeah.
Gathering. Even on.
Uh, the, 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 yeah, the react people will know, but it'd be, it will be something that we do through the, through the react lines.
Good on our end, yeah.
Okay, good, that's cool.
Unless you're trying to use the parking lot.
Right. No, um, the only, the only thing I will say is that, uh, uh, you know, parking will be an issue that we'll have to deal with, cause people obviously will be coming from all over the place. So, um, you know, uh, we certainly wouldn't schedule it on that same day as the farmer's market or something, right? You know, I, I'm assuming that the parking lot is open parking.
Well, there's, there's your person there.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the parking lot is, you know, pretty much open parking lot unless there's an event or something going on.
Oh.
Check out the Betsall parking lot.
Yeah.
You would have to rent the Betsall parking lot.
Yeah, to rent the, the Betsall parking lot, okay.
We don't really.
Scheduled. It could cost like seven dollars an hour.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna officially rent the parking lot, I mean, we don't police it on the weekends, so.
Yeah.
People use it.
Right.
But we do have events on the weekend that use it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what our routes should be yet.
Hmm.
Um, obviously we have, you know, the east side of town and the west side of town and, and the Moonstone Beach, so. You know, how far do we wanna, how far do we wanna walk and so on and so forth, where do we wanna walk?
I think we're wandering a little far afield from, uh, committee members' communications.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, he's absolutely right.
Are there other committee members who have communications that would like to speak?
Not me.
Gordon? Nope, your hand isn't up, so I'll say nope. Anybody else? Nope.
Is there a way for us to see them?
Yeah, I haven't, well, we can't see them.
See their face.
No.
Why don't we only saw one?
Why can't we see them?
One of them, a panelist, one, no.
Yes, one's a panelist and, and Gordon just came in as a guest. Oh. Okay.
What did you say, Haley?
I said Gordon declined panelists, I'm right.
Oh, and Jim too, or?
The panelist.
Everybody's on Zoom.
Oh, but why can't we see them?
We can't see them.
I mean, why can't we?
When they're on Zoom, you can't see them.
No.
Why can't we see, we can on regular Zoom, why can't we on this Zoom?
The panelist.
Jim speaks, it shows up here. No, why can't we see his face? Cause he doesn't have his camera on.
Ah.
Oh.
Ooh, surprise. Well, that'll do it.
Okay. Yes.
I think my camera's on.
I see. Oh, okay.
Well.
All right. We're talking.
We hear you loud and clear, Jim.
Okay. Okay, so any other committee member, okay, let's go then on.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to wander off.
Was public comment, so, um. Do we have anything from anybody online, public comment or here? Nope. Hey. All right, consent agenda. You have the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes. Um, are there any edits or additions or deletions?
It looks good to me.
Okay, and if not, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
I will move.
It's, uh, let's, no, that moves.
Okay, and do I have a second?
One second.
All right.
Yeah, a second.
All those in favor? Okay, you guys in favor?
I'm gonna abstain, cause I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, how about you, Gordon?
It's there.
Yeah. I think, yeah, he's right there, okay.
So.
So one of, yeah, yeah. So, one, two, three.
Three, three.
So that's. Okay.
It's ready to.
All right, thank you. Beautiful minutes as usual.
Oh. Fabulous, 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 fabulous.
So, um, let's go to four A. And four A is discussion of CCSD's response to the homeless. And what we have here, thank you. Thank you, Haley, is we have the policy that we, that the CCSD on encampments on district property. And this is policy number two, 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 five. Yeah, it's just discussion. So I'm, I'll give you just a moment to kind of refresh your memories, I'm sure you've all read it.
Yes.
And then there is the, um, San Luis Obispo Countywide Plan to Address Homelessness um, from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven, and I did not um, have Haley print that because it's very, very long.
It's pretty long and, if I may say, probably not really terribly germane.
Yes.
I, I did read through it and I could see very little where we, there were some spots, but it actually is covered down here.
Yes.
Collaborative, which, and, and part, and partnerships on the program.
Yeah.
But, you know, cause it's all stuff that we had no control over.
Right.
You know, like building more units.
Yeah, so the discussion today, I think, um, yeah, since this was approved not too long ago, July eighth, twenty twenty one.
Right.
Um, I think, um, Claudia, this was something that you brought up about, um, wanting to have possibly uh, policy on this, so we do have a policy. Um, and I, I, I agree, I think it's pretty comprehensive. So, I, I don't think we need to bring it back.
Uh, the only thing I would, maybe we should just clarify what, it says, um, stakeholders and independent nonprofits. What independent nonprofit, like either by camera nonprofit or like, uh, forest committee or?
Originally, when we did this, there was, it was more specific and then it was decided to just make it more general. Rather call out specific mobilizations.
Well, maybe you should.
Well.
Kind of nonprofit that's, you know.
Well, I think.
Yields of homelessness or just any nonprofit.
Well, anyone who's interested in.
Yeah, there, what's the name of the, what's the name of the, um, that group that, um, that came to the board meeting last week?
When you would, um.
Yeah. Can we not have side talking?
So, I apologize. Affordable.
Affordable housing, yeah.
People self-help.
People self-help.
Yes.
Yes. That's not for homeless, though.
Well, that's, that's what, um, this, I think that's what this alludes to is, um, how can we have collaborative efforts to, um, to create low-cost housing for the, for the people who are homeless right now?
You know, that's not people self-up housing, that's, that's not even close.
Well.
They don't, they don't do that.
Enforcement partnerships, that would be the CIP, what are the CIP folks from, uh, from the county? Uh, conservation stakeholders could be forest committee or, you know, people who are interested in conservation. Because that does become an issue when you start getting, uh, camping on district properties. The big discussion, when, when this was brought forward, there was no previous policy. And the big discussion, and, and the main thing was this first paragraph, camping is not permitted in district property unless expressly authorized. There's no, this is the only place.
It says.
It disappears. So it is significant.
That, that was my, my primary base, they just say don't, don't.
Wow.
Put an overnight party in.
Wow.
This, this committee actually came up with this. It took a number of meetings.
Yeah, this was, yeah, I remember this.
Yeah.
This was a.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was, this was a barn burner.
Well, we kind of wanted in.
But I had a long talk with, um, with David Akiri about this.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, and it was very enlightening and I was very impressed with what he does. So, he, he's kind of stepped in Carlos's big shoes.
Yeah.
And he goes out on a regular basis, he knows all the people, he's telling them Susan lives here and, and Jennifer lives there and Zosia lives there. So he knows all the people and, I mean, this is different in Camber than it is under communities. We don't have as many homeless, so you can kind of, you know, kind of keep tabs on that, but he's been afraid, you know, afraid to get out there.
No, he's a good guy.
Yeah, so, you know, you can have a policy, but if you don't have anybody to implement it.
Yeah.
You know, it wouldn't make any difference, but I, I just want to tell you, I'm very impressed with what he's doing and he's making a huge difference and uh, as long as the homeless people know that we're there and the newcomers that pass through know to keep passing through and seventy-two hours that they will be booted out.
Uh huh.
Uh, and that's not in here, but, um, maybe, maybe that's what he, the criteria he's using, maybe that should be in here.
No, actually.
That might be a law, I, I, I think that's the law that.
Well, yeah, see, there are certain, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe just reference the, the county code about, about how long you can stay in this place. Because he said, he, he said seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
They give notice.
After providing proper notice and appropriately storing property, that's the kind, that would actually be the law.
Yeah.
All unauthorized cabins shall be removed, so, uh, that's leading the reference to the code.
Well, maybe we should, we should.
Well, I get, well, you could.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, um, you know, the board approved it as it was, so, you, you know, the bottom line is.
The way we book it and it was already done.
Because you asked to.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, if you can't make any changes to it, we just.
Well, we can't make changes, just today we can't, cause we'll need to bring it back. But I kind of like it, cause it's nice and straightforward and simple.
Yeah, yeah, it looks good to me.
The only thing I would say is that, I think you just, I think you should reference the code. And I think you should reference what kind of nonprofits would be involved in this. I mean, that's just local nonprofits, that's just so wide open and.
Well, remember, it'll be purposely left it that way.
Yeah.
If, if you wanted, I mean, you know.
You could say such as, you know, the forest committee or something like.
Such as. Yeah, it wasn't.
Such as stewards that are kind of forest stewards or, I don't know, something like that, so the. Right now, I, I, you know, I, I guess, I don't, I, I just think it needs to be.
Well, what I'll do is I will bring it back to the next meeting and make it so that we can make decisions about that.
Okay.
Yes.
But I, I like the.
Yeah, it's very, it's very concise.
I like it, it's.
And.
Yeah.
And. Okay. Okay.
All right.
Now, the next agenda item is, um, a discussion, this is, um, agenda item four B, discussion on CCSD's quality on lighting. And we don't have a policy. And the county has not, um, approved or what is it called? Accepted or?
It is, um, not a tier one, okay, yeah. For the Dark Skies Initiative, and so they have it agendized, there's no ordinance written, um, and they don't have, uh, any intent to do one soon.
We were priority one.
Hmm.
We were priority one last year, they put it just back to priority two in January.[1680.84] And we got booted out, um, by a couple of people, including low-income housing. Um, we were told that we could pay, um. Well. A person from the county said, well, um, I said, how could we move this along? And he said, well, he said, you could, um. Well, you could pay the planners, you know. I said, oh, really? Yeah, we could pay them directly. And he says, yeah, just, you know, give them like eighteen thousand dollars. We'll make it twenty. And I said, is that a, is that a bribe? He's, oh, no, no, we call that a fee. So it's kind of arbitrary fee that he made up at the study. Airline saying, well. He was a long-term planner at the time. So I, I, I'm, I'm sorry to say this, but the, the county seems to do this as a. Unregular basis and people who pay. The planners can get their projects moved ahead. People self-up housing and place, you know, groups like that. They have a lot of money and they can afford to do that. So, um, the lighting code has been written. It's been, well, we did it. We started this process nine years ago. So it's, you know, we talked to them quite a few times, but the, the policy has been written. It's been submitted a couple of times. It's going on over by Dark Sky International, which is the ones who certify. And. The latest version of it is what was kind of approved, you know, kind of orally. And, um, I added in, oh, some other things that are basically, except for, I, I added in a. Of the terms. Which I thought was important. And then I included signage, lighting and some other things like that. So there were all things that are in the county code right now.
Is this in your, um, your document that you sent me?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, I, I didn't send you the, the code that we wrote. I can.
You sent me the outdoor door lighting policy.
I sent you the policy. I didn't, I didn't send you the, the outdoor lighting code of the county code. I'm, I'm. If, if I may.
Yes.
I'm all for this. Yeah. But I'm wondering. I'm wondering what lines or dotted lines. With this policy, you know, talk. About, you know, the climate adaptation policy as well, or the climate action plan. Is this something that, that, and I'm just throwing this out there. Is this something that belongs as a separate policy? Is it a separate item? Is it something that would be included in the overall? You know, because we're talking here about. You know, reducing lighting expenses and light pollution. Well, light pollution, absolutely. I mean, is that not a part of? You know, what we're doing to, you know, I mean, the climate. Action plan is, you know, could certainly talk about the effects of or be involved with the effects of overlighting or. You know, how lighting affects the, the natural. World around us. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I, I just, it, does it, is, is, is this a separate policy, I guess? And I, it's fine with me. I mean, I'm happy to look at in that regard too. Because I think it's important, but.
Well, I think. I think what we have to do is we have to look at, is this a policy that the board wants us to go forward with? Um, and so what I would. Recommend is. That, um. If, if y'all want to direct me to go ahead and to ask that question to the board, I can go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
And that's not an action that we're going to be taking today, but I can ask if that's what they would like us to do.
Because when this was turned down before, there was a to, almost a totally different board.
Okay.
And I, I tried to emphasize, when I, when I made the presentation, I tried to emphasize that this is a way for the district to save money, say fifty thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
So. The lighting policy has, one, has to do with many factors, which we would, I love that you, you put all this. Information in here. I, I just really excited. But. The main thing you needed to impress upon them is that this is a money-saving thing. And it's also more safe. And people don't get that. They think if you blast light out, like this wall paint, the path that's on the back of this building off and he was. As you drive down the highway is dangerous, literally dangerous. And. Uh, so anyway, I.
I just want to go find the plug that thing.
The other thing is that we, we're building some momentum. I should tell you, we're building some momentum on, on dark skies. And the momentum is that a woman by the name of Savani Babu, I'll call her Miss Babu. Um, she is a world traveler. She's a former, well, she. I guess she, after ten years, she decided she wasn't, wasn't going to be a lawyer anymore. But she started her own kind of, she's a, a, um, part of journalist and travels over the world and this, and she has. A project and, uh, to, uh, write a story about Cambria in the first place I have heard. For San Diego Magazine. So she interviewed me. She came up to Santa, Santa Barbara, interviewed me last, uh, without her name. And, um, I'm very excited about this because only she's going to have this in San Diego Magazine. But some of the things that they, she puts into the magazine are going to be in the book that she's writing about dark skies. So. This is important for Cambria, you know, for tourism. I mean, this is huge. I mean, people that have telescopes, you know what telescopes cost? I'm just. Catherine Ryan-High came to our, our, our V figure and she was one of the three people that bought Soviet telescopes.
Right.
The, the filter, the, the K, the calcium K filter she brought was like eight hundred dollars for a filter, you know? And no brandy other guys have that because so they're expensive. So people with, with, uh, um, who don't do astrophysics photography and do. And do, um, amateur astronomy and stuff like that. They have money. And we want these people coming to Cambria and they come in the middle of the winter, you know, you have these tourists. And they, um, they spend a lot of money because they have things. And it's, so it's, it's good for our economy and for our tourism. Um, and it, um, I just, you know, it's just, it's good for that, but it's good. It is a very important for the, the wildlife. I mean, it's the most resonant thing you have here.
Yeah, well, you have, yeah, yeah, you have, you have why the policy is needed and I, you know, and, and these places look good to me.
Well, it's the point, the main point for the, the district is saving money, number one, and for safety.
Right.
And when you leave lights on all the time and they flash that in people's eyes, that it's not safe. That is actually makes it easier for the bad guys to go into the sewer treatment plant and, and steal equipment or whatever they want to do. Because they can hide in the shadows. So dark sky lighting, it doesn't mean you turn the lights off. It means you make them shine towards the ground and not the sky in people's eyes. So. I just can't.
I'm sorry. Don't go ahead.
I understand. That this is not a, it's not political.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's something that is good for the community and it's important for our district to, uh, to be, you know. Aware of the, of the safety part, which is not what people, that's why people don't have lights on.
Right.
And, and to save, save money.
So.
I, yeah, I have a question and, and I guess a comment. The first question would be, does. C C S D have any authority to regulate? Lighting on private property within the C C S D jurisdiction?
No.
That would be the first question. Okay. And I thought that might be the answer to that. So, so the comment would be that. That maybe an approach might be, would be to see if the. Board, the full board of directors would be willing to pass a resolution in support. Of the county. Adopting. The lighting plan for the community of Cambria. So rather than just having a bunch of private citizens. Uh, going up to the board and pleading their case. If the, if the governing body of the C C S D. Requested that the board of supervisors adopt that policy for our community. Uh, that might have more of an effect. And, uh, get us back to the head of the line.
Thank you, Jim. I, one of the things that, that we should probably ask our search is for a letter from the, from the C C S D board and, and, and you. Um, that you're in favor of dark skies.
Well, they could pass a resolution. They could, they could take a formal action and pass a resolution requesting that the county consider.
Faster to run a letter first is to, we have to write something to the county anyway, if you want to implement what you said. You know, so that would, that would happen faster than.
The board would have, the board would have to take action in order to write a letter anyway.
Oh.
Yeah, right. It's, it's, it's a, it's a policy decision from a board level to.
Right.
Place pressure.
Right.
On the county to move us up back up to a tier one and pass on, pass on. It's for the C C S D itself, on C C S D owned properties. We understand about the dark skies initiative. It is a process and budgeting process to start this changeover.
Yeah.
And so we recently did some lighting, uh, David did or. Or right when he came in terms of replacing lighting. So we're working on the, the budget process of. Of adopting that. But, you know, we have very few properties in the district that.
Yeah.
Would make the difference that I think that you're really uncertain. We're talking about a community issue. So.
So I think, um, we have to be really careful because the agenda item is discussion of the policy on lighting. So, um.
Chipper Scott, I'm so sorry. We, we double booked ourselves. We're, we're going to run.
That, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
No, he's over. Just click it in. Okay.
You've been here since the beginning.
Uh, really? Yes, I just clicked and.
You said you have the properties, although you do have a lot of streetlights.
Yeah, those are the streetlights I'm talking about in terms of what we did with, uh, upgrading lighting. So swapping those all out. All comes out of David's budget.
Yeah.
Which is razor thin.
It's expensive to try, change them out because you have to go to specialists to come in and.
But it's on a radar. It's, it's not that we don't agree with the initiative itself.
No, and I. And I don't think we're there yet. That's why.
Close, you know, in terms of planning for it, but it's.
So I, so I think the first thing that I want to do is I want, want to, I want to ask. Thank you.
Sorry.
I, I want to just, well, just a second. Um, that. I want to ask the board. Do they want us to do a policy on lighting?
Right.
And I don't think it's about dark skies or anything like that. It's, do you want us to do that? And then when we have that. Direction, then we can, um, address what it would. What it would look like. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Deborah, I don't know why. The board would want to create a policy on an issue that it has no authority to enforce.
No, it would be only on the.
C S D.
C S, C C S D policy for pol, for the, for the, um, our own properties.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And street lighting, really. Yeah.
Pretty, pretty modest amount of lighting involved in that.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it doesn't include lighting, which is not modest.
It does create street lighting.
Yeah.
So, um, what we need to do is, is we need to limit the discussion to a policy on lighting.
Yeah.
Um, that what is within our jurisdiction. And then at that point, um. You know, maybe you just need to come directly to the board.
Yeah.
To ask about, um, a resolution or to ask about a, either one of them. And if you want to do that, then, um. Send it to, send the, um, request to, um, Tom Gray. And then I'll talk to them about it too.
Or you could, or you could wait till January. Where you might have a better, uh, better luck.
Oh. One thing I have to say.
That's probably true.
One, one thing I do have to say about writing, and of course, you know, Tom and I have different political views, but I, just because of that. Lighting and dark side lighting is not political. It's. You know, it's not. And people seem to think it is and that it's, you know, it's not.
Yeah.
Because, well, look at, you know, the good proof of this is that California only has two dark sky communities in the whole state and we're a big state. The rest of them are all in very conservative states.
So. So, so I don't think.
It's not political.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that that's it at all. All I want to do is.
Yeah.
Be within our agenda.
Right.
So.
I just want to get clarity when something I'm a little confused. But I'm not, and my memory is not working very well. Is this what, is this text is what we, we told the board last time?
I'm pretty sure that's what.
Because it doesn't, I, I, I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe we need to locate that.
Yeah.
Because what we're asking is that what is already rejected as well. So if you want to bring that forward.
Why would we rewrite it? No.
Well, you need, first of all, to see what it was rejected.
They just rejected the whole thing. They just said, no.
Well, I, but they had a reason for it.
They did?
Yeah, there was discussion, there was a board discussion.
Oh.
And one reason that it didn't have is I don't recall anyone from the policy committee even being there.
Well, and that's.
And I refuse to do it without.
And that's what, that's what I'm going to say in the future. With, um, with, you know, with this kind of, um, situation, but we needed. If, if, if they would like to us to speak to. Lighting within C C S D's jurisdiction, then we can create a policy.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't even necessarily have to, uh, they use the word dark skies. If that does put some people off, what we need to do is how do we, as the C C S D. Um, absolutely, um. Have a policy and then enforce the policy in a way that makes sense for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Deborah, what I'll do is. I just need to look to myself. If I can locate the text. Of what the board rejected in the meeting that we said.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. That'd be good.
Thank you. That would be very valuable.
My, my suspicion is that they looked at it as not, as expanding the boundaries beyond the C S D itself. That's my suspicion.
But I'm not sure. I'm not sure that particular board was interested.
Yeah.
They just said no.
Well.
Okay, so, um, is there any public comment on this agenda item? No, cool. All right. So I think we have. We have some ideas of where we're going to go with this. All right. So let's go to agenda item five. This is future agenda items and, um. What I have down so far is the climate adaptation policy and I'm going to bring back. In policy form.
Please.
What you have written.
Yeah.
Um, the homeless policy, um, what I'm hearing is that. There are a couple of changes that you all would, would like to encourage the board to make. So I will bring that back.
Not, not all of us. I, I think it's great the way it is. I don't think it needs any tweaking. Personally.
Well, maybe I'll have Claudia tell me what it needs to be and then I'll. Add that to that. Okay. And then, um, the third thing is, um, a lighting policy. And what I'm going to do is I will actually ask the board. If, um, that's the direct, if they want to give us direction to go ahead and create a lighting policy. And if so, and when this happens, I will let you know, Claudia, because you need to come talk to them about it. So that they see that there is actually a need for that. All right?
No, no, that's not, wait, wait, wait. Sorry. I don't think that's exactly right. I think what we were hoping. Would be that you would, um. Sound out the board as to whether they would. Uh, pass a resolution requesting that the county. Adopt. A lighting policy for our community, since it's the county that has the authority over everything other than the few little bits of C C S D-owned land.
I think that.
That's what we were hoping to get done.
Well, and, um, I think that that's a completely separate issue. So, um, I will, um, talk with, uh, the agenda review committee and see what we can do about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not to bring back to this policy committee. Okay?
Uh, one little thing I've sort of, just the point of information, I went actually request, I know, I'm sorry that, uh. Uh, my, like Mr. McLeary, you can't laugh, but, um, one of the things that we need to do, that this is, this is for certification, we need to, um. We need to use a sky quality meter to assess how much light we have in the town and. Um, so we are looking at, we have the money to buy the, the sky quality meter and a computer. And we want to actually set it up so that monitors is, is always set up and then we can just go and we can. Plug into it and then we can, you know, periodically see what it's saying, but. We either want to go to the library or, um, this building here. Um. So I just wanted to let you know that because if, if the C S D decides that you do want to have some kind of a lighting policy. It would be a really great step forward to say, well, and we're going to, we're going to put a sky quality meter, you know, on the building. It's.
That's why you need to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's very good. Yeah, you should go. This is what we love.
Why would I, I want to give my dog a phone. I want to give my dog a phone to show if I let him get me to find it through.
Well.
I don't think that people, I don't think that, well, I'm not talking about talking for an hour, but I don't think that people understand and just in general, you don't understand. That. That a good lighting policy is safer. They don't, they don't get that. It doesn't apply to them. So I need to show them pictures and say, well, there's one in here. You know, just get a look at it. There's one that shows you.
Well.
All, all, all to be presented before the board.
Yeah.
If I were you, I would, I would keep it as brief as you possibly can.
Well, I just want to show this. I said, you know, lighting is, if the one is for safety and two is saving money.
Completely outside of the policy committee. So, um, you, if that's what you want to do, I would.
No, absolutely.
I would send a letter to, to Matthew and say, I'd like to make this presentation.
Yeah, make, make, yeah, make, make a presentation. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. All right. So is there anything else as far as future agenda items? I will tell you, we will be, um, looking at all of the policies that have been revised. Those are going to be looked at by the board sometime in August.
Okay.
So after that happens, it'll come back here. So I don't know when that will be.
Good. That's good.
Do you?
Because it does need to have.
Either of my, um, Zoom participants have, um, anything they want to put on future agenda items?
Uh, not me. Thank you.
Okay. And not you, Gordon? Gordon says no. Okay, all right. Any, um, public comment on future agenda items? No? All right. So let's go ahead and then adjourn and the time is four ten.
We're nicely done.
Yeah, I mean, these are, the thing is with this, um, that we are trying to find the direction that we want for this committee. So I'm going to go ahead and, um. Um, end the meeting. Thank you so much for coming to us through Zoom.
Thanks.
And good help to both of you. Now I gotta go check to see if I got COVID.
Yeah, really.
Okay. All right.
Is that right?
Later, you guys.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.
Yeah.
Yeah, take care.
Thank you.
Man.